We're good.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Oh, my name is Daniel Pagean. I am the Program Chief of the Massachusetts DEP Waterways Regulation Program. With me tonight is Stephanie Mora, Division Director for Wetlands and Waterways, Alice Doyle, Regional Planner in the Waterways Program. Together we constitute the hearing panel for tonight's remote public hearing. Welcome to the remote public hearing for the proposed Chapter 91 Regulation Amendments to 310 CMR 9.00. The format for tonight's public hearing is as follows. I will read the public notice into the record which describes the purpose of the hearing, written comment, procedure, and appeal rights. Excuse me. That was in the wrong spot. Written comment procedure, excuse me. I will make a brief presentation to provide context. Next, we will open the floor to questions and comments. The Department, we will attempt to answer questions if, I want to say if it seems appropriate and within the context and can be answered in a relatively brief fashion. The purpose of this hearing is to take comments rather than provide a question or answer session. Following the brief presentation, we will open the floor to questions. First calling on elected or appointed officials and then the general public. When you are called on, please state your name for the record. If you are an elected official or resident who wish to identify municipality, please do so. As there are 73 people in the hearing, we ask that folks try to keep their comments relatively brief. If you have multiple topics you wish to go into or a lengthy comment, we ask that you kind of cut that in half and we'll circle back to you at the end. This is our fourth hearing in this manner. We have not stopped anyone from speaking for the length of time they need. So we ask that folks please be respectful of the other attendees and we'll get to everybody. Please remember that any public comments or questions given today should also be sent to the Department in writing before the public comment deadline for consideration. After everyone has had an opportunity to speak, we'll make some closing remarks and we will adjourn the hearing. I will now read the public notice into the record. This public notice appeared in the, oh, excuse me, Boston Globe and the Fall River Herald. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Public Hearing Notice. This public hearing notice is available in alternative languages, languages given. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 91, Section 18, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is proposing regulatory amendments to 310 CMR 9.00. These amendments would modify the provisions related to municipal harbor planning, effectively affirming Mass DEP's approval of each of the existing plans through incorporation into 310 CMR 9.00. The regulatory text and a background document are available with a copy along with a copy of this public notice on Mass DEP's website. Mass DEP will hold virtual public hearings via Zoom. For cybersecurity purposes, advanced registration is required. Two hearings are listed. Tuesday, July 27, 1:00 p.m., Tuesday, July 27 at 6:00 p.m., Zoom links are provided. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email with the information needed to join the meeting. Please join the public hearing from your computer, tablet, or smartphone or dial-in using your phone. Testimony may be presented orally at the public hearing. Written comments may be submitted through August 6, 2021 by email to massdepwaterways@mass.gov or via mail to Mass DEP Waterways Program, One Winter Street, Fifth Floor, Boston, Massachusetts, 02108. For special accommodations for these hearings, please call the Mass DEP Diversity Office at 617-292-5751. This information is available in alternative format upon request. Mass DEP provides language access interpreter, translation services to limited English proficient individuals free of charge. If you need an interpreter to participate in this meeting, translation services can be found at what given on the DEP website. By order of the Department of Environmental Protection, Martin Sueberg, Commissioner. I will now make a brief presentation to provide some context and then we will open the floor to questions. As I mentioned, the purpose of this hearing is to take public input, public comment, and testimony regarding the proposed regulations, proposed amendments, the regulations at 310 CMR 9.00, the waterways regulations. The process thus far has been, on May 14th, the public notice of draft regulations was published by the Secretary of State in the Massachusetts Register. Public notices were published in the Boston Globe and the Fall River Herald announcing the first two public hearings you see here, June 8, 1:00 p.m., June 8, 6:00 p.m., etc. At the June 8 hearing, the Department announced that additional hearings would be held. Those hearings are held earlier today and now. Those are the four public hearings that the Department has scheduled and held. Public comments are due on August 6 to the Department. Email address again is provided below. That is by far the best way to get information to the Waterways Program. A little bit of background. Massachusetts General Law Chapter 91 and its heart protects public trust rights. Public trust rights exist in several different places. First of all, existing tidal waters up to the mean high watermark and infill tidalands up to the historic high watermark with some exceptions below. A Mass DEP issued license or permit is required for any change in use or structural alteration within a jurisdictional area. Excluded from jurisdiction under Chapter 91 are landlocked tidalands. Those are tidalands that are located 250 feet or more from the mean high watermark and are separated from that water by one or more interconnected public ways. Among the things Chapter 91 does, it creates limitations on development in order to protect the public trust rights. These bullets here are some of the ways that the Chapter 91 regulations protect public trust rights. Please note additional protection is, greater protection is provided with Commonwealth tidalands. Items of particular interest here are setbacks for water-dependent uses, building height limitations, open space, etc. Again, licenses, licenses or permits required for many activities in jurisdictional area. Now, the numerical standards, if you will, that I just mentioned earlier, open space, setbacks, height limitations, etc., those may be modified by the Department and Secretary for Environmental Affairs through municipal harbor planning. The intent of municipal harbor planning is to provide local input into licensing and tidals. The municipal harbor plan, as it says here, is requested by a municipality. It is prepared by a municipality. However, that preparation is supervised by the Office of Coastal Zone Management in consultation with Mass DEP and then the Secretary. And as DEP mentioned twice here, the Department participates in this, in this process. Prior to, prior to seeing Coastal, Office of Coastal Zone Management submitting a recommendation for approval to the Secretary, the DEP Waterways Program needs to sign off on it, needs to submit a letter of concurrence that the municipal harbor plan will result in a proper public purpose, which is the definition of the criteria upon which we issue licenses. Then, once it goes to the Secretary for Environmental Affairs, this process takes about one to two years, sometimes longer. While there is no regulatory criteria that says a term is five years, they are generally approved for five years and there are provisions for renewals and extensions. The draft Chapter 91 regulations, the proposed amendments to these regulations the Department proposes, affirm Mass DEP's concurrence for each existing municipal harbor plan, there are 17. It confirms the Department's authority to approve these plans. Confirms that the projects approved achieve a proper public purpose. Defines the municipal harbor plan and incorporates all of the specific offsets, substitutions, and amplifications contained in those harbor plans. Brings them into the regulations. Anyone and everyone is invited to submit comments. They all need a lot on these regulations. As I said, electronic submitted is preferred. The email address is provided here, dpwaterways@mass.gov. Anyone contacting the Waterways Program for the first time on a matter is encouraged to use that address. In this case, please add a subject line, Chapter 91, NHP Regulations. That is by far, those two items right there, by far the best way to get your comment into our lengthy list of comments and get them to me. Comments sent previously to my own address, daniel Pagian@mass.gov, to Stephanie Mora and to Commissioner Sueberg or to the water, excuse me, the Wetlands programmatic email, all of those emails, all of those comments find their way to the Waterways Program. So there's no need to repeat those comments if you've already sent them. They have all found their way to us. We have many comments. Hard copy may be submitted at the address shown. Again, please provide attention, Chapter 91, NHP Regulations. And again, the public comment deadline is August 6. So that's, 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 that's a, albeit, brief summary of the topic at hand. It is a brief summary of the regulatory changes. Anyone looking to learn a lot more about it is encouraged to go to the DEP website. You search for hearings, comments, you will find the Waterways, you'll find the Chapter 91 regulations. Anyone not able to identify that and the additional information is encouraged to email those questions to the dp email at waterways@mass.gov. We're now going to provide an opportunity for public comment, public testimony. And as I said, we're going to provide that opportunity first to elected and appointed officials. I have not been looking at the chat, so I'm going to rely on Stephanie if you could let us know how many elected or appointed officials might be present.
Thank you, Daniel. So as of now, I'm aware of a candidate for Boston City Council, James Reggie Coleman, who has indicated a desire to speak. I am not aware of any other elected officials or candidates at the moment. So if you are there, please, please identify yourself in the chat. And for now, we can move to Reggie Coleman, candidate for Boston City Council.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for the invitation. It's quite okay to think big. There's nothing wrong with thinking big. However, when it comes to development, the evidence is clear. Something so close to the waterfront, I think would do more harm than good to Boston right now. We have to think of, yeah, what's happening right now, we can see in the past few days, we had 100 degrees in the last day of June. Too large of a development to close to the water is going to be very, very detrimental to the city of Boston. We need to rethink this project and as a candidate for Boston City Council at large, I am not in favor for this project assistance right now to be in that current situation. Thank you. Modernization is a lot smarter than us and I think, you know, we've, it's predicted to have over 40 days in the 90s by the end of the decade. And then saltwater is very detrimental to that area. We have to rethink infrastructure and to make sure that we have, perhaps this move this project to somewhere else. It would be nice to have a nice project like that, but I think closer to the water, in the waterfront side, right? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Again, I only say this a couple of times, you are encouraged to submit your comments in writing so the Department can consider, consider them in a thoughtful way. So no other elected or appointed officials?
Not that I am aware of.
All right.
One, one bit of housekeeping. We, we just have a couple of folks who are on the phone and they want to be reminded of how to unmute themselves and I believe that's star six, correct? If, if, if they desire to speak. I'll handle that and I'll,
Because I'm not sure.
That's okay. I'll put that in the chat. And in the meantime, I'll, I'll give you the names of the next three folks who have indicated that they want to speak and we will continue to track that in the chat. So we have Aaron Toffler, Phil Cooper, and Gabriella Coletta. So Aaron Toffler is up first.
All right, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on these proposed amendments to the Waterways Regulations, which address the need to clarify the status of previous changes originally put forward in municipal harbor plans across the Commonwealth. I'm Aaron Toffler and I'm the Policy Director at Boston Harbor Now. Our mission is to ensure that our waterfront is climate resilient, accessible, and welcoming to all and helps to create a world-class coastal city or in the case of these regulations, excellent coastal cities up and down the Massachusetts waterfront. The draft regulations seek to clarify the status of the municipal harbor plans that have already been adopted and implemented through licensed projects, which have provided valuable public benefits. While this is an important goal, there are other important considerations which must be addressed in the process. As a waterfront advocacy organization with a regional focus, we believe that municipal harbor planning is an important tool for municipalities and the public to be able to shape their water fronts to meet the particular needs of specific places. It allows municipalities to modify by way of substitutions and amplifications the dimensional requirements of Chapter 91, the state's public trust law. We also emphasize that Chapter 91 has as its primary focus the protection of the public's rights in current and former tidalands. It's designed to prioritize these public rights over private interests and create an accessible waterfront for everyone. These municipal harbor plans, however they are ultimately approved, must provide for equitable access to water fronts across the Commonwealth and incorporate climate resilience measures that will preserve such access for the future. Further, while these amendments will provide clarity with respect to the existing municipal harbor plans, they do not provide a clear path forward for approving MHPs in the future. Mass DEP must continue to carry out its mandate to protect valuable environmental resources and provide for public access to our shared waterfront. This includes prioritizing equity, access, and resilience in waterfront development. Larger projects should carry with them comparably enlarged public benefits. In all areas where these MHPs apply, the public's rights in tidalands is paramount. Retroactive approval of the existing municipal harbor plans alone will not achieve this result. We look forward to continuing to work in partnership with Mass DEP and other state and city agencies as well as the private sector to create the accessible and resilient water fronts across the Commonwealth that are envisioned by the public trust law. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to speak this evening and we will be submitting written comments by the deadline.
Thank you, Aaron.
Next up is Phil Cooper.
Hi. As was announced, my name is Phil Cooper. I'm an economist and financial professional by training at a little school across the river at MIT and have taught finance and economics to the Graduate School of the University of Chicago for many years, although I am now retired. We live on Broad Street and so proximity to the harbor is extremely important to us. In addition to a number of other comments that have been made in the past, not tonight, about opposing behemoth-like projects as the one proposed by Don Chiaffro, I added a slightly different perspective and it really is additional to those other objections. I focus on value and I believe that this project would hurt the value of existing residents who have invested in their, their residences and their parking easements and so on. It doesn't really matter whether the project permits rentals or purchases, but adding that quantity of residents to an area where the Boulevard project, three years after it was completed, is still not rented out. The, there's a project already approved, which we have no objection to, at India Street and Boulevard around the Purchase Street, the corner there, there's the Hook area project, all which are going to add opportunity, residential opportunities. We think that this project is just out of scale and will diminish the value of those people who already have residences in that area. And so we see economic loss. The other thing that I don't think has been properly considered is that I believe that this, a project of this scale will lead to traffic nightmares for a minimum of three years. For those, for, you know, when we look at Atlantic Avenue and Purchase Creek, we see how already it has a sufficient backlog in the busy rush hour hours. So those are my comments and I'll be submitting written comment on this and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Well, thank you very much for, for taking the time to attend and for your comments. Definitely perked my ears up with MIT economists. Everybody perks my ears up, but thank you. Stephanie?
All right. At the moment, there are two other people who have indicated that they would like to speak in this. Gabriella Coletta and Chris Nicodemus. We'll continue to monitor both the chat and the raise hand feature for other folks who may wish to speak. And I will also keep reposting the guidance on how to find those functions. So for now, Gabriella Coletta has the floor.
Just confirming you can hear me without echo.
Yes, Gabriella, we can hear you. No echo.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Pagian and Director Moya. Good evening. My name is Gabriella Coletta and I've lived waterfront adjacent in East Boston my entire life. I grew up in a home built by shipbuilder Donald McKay, went to both the Sam Adams and Yumana Barnes Elementary School overlooking the harbor and still enjoy world-renowned open spaces with friends and family today. The Boston Harbor has been a meaningful and consistent anchor of joy in my life that I one day hope to share with a family of my own. Now, I bring my love of and loyalty to the waterfront as External Relations Manager at the New England Aquarium. The aquarium is a beloved tourist destination and conservation organization. We are deeply concerned about climate change and the implications for the world's oceans as well as our home here on Central War. Our priorities for the downtown waterfront are climate resiliency, inclusivity, and accessibility. We believe that everyone should enjoy the waterfront. We believe in a waterfront for all. The waterfront is a precious resource and much like any jewel is under incredible pressures of both climate change and interests of an elite few who seek to overdevelop it to the detriment and exclusion of many. I've seen this firsthand in East Boston. Our President and CEO, Vicky Schrull, spoke earlier this afternoon and throughout this process on these proposed regulations. I would like to reiterate our concerns and make those attending tonight aware of the dynamic citywide conversation presently taking place about the downtown waterfront, much to my excitement. While we understand Mass DEP needs to address the Superior Court's decision and make changes to its MHP approval process, whatever fix is proposed should not affirmatively reinstate the downtown waterfront MHP. The world has changed in many ways since this planning process began in 2013. We can and must do better with an inclusive process that considers all that we have learned. Boston, its changing leadership, its residents and institutions all agree. We deserve the opportunity to chart a new course for the downtown waterfront that reflects these new priorities. Given that we are emerging from a global pandemic and within a historic racial reckoning, future investments in infrastructure must prioritize resilience on a regional scale that protects the vitality of all Bostonians regardless of race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status. In 2021, we must prioritize climate justice or the holistic approach to combating climate change by integrating the needs of individuals in environmental justice communities while centering equity in policymaking, planning, and development. Climate justice isn't just about the protection and resiliency of coastlines. Climate justice takes into consideration the protection and resiliency of people. Climate justice places individuals, those typically within the margins of society, at the center of decision-making processes. Any plan for the downtown waterfront must be based upon an integrated approach to climate change that addresses systemic needs for more affordable housing, especially on the waterfront, more accessible and sustainable transit options, and ways to affirmatively combat historic cycles of exclusion on the waterfront against people of color, low-income families, seniors, veterans, and people with disabilities. The decision that invalidated the Secretary's approval of a downtown waterfront MHP offers us, offers us a rare chance to get it right. The downtown waterfront MHP has multiple flaws. It failed to take meaningful consideration of community input, deferred substantive planning that has yet to materialize, and boldly authorized two private developers to permit out-of-scale projects with heights greater than those allowed under Chapter 91, thus effectively declaring a waterfront for sale. To reinstate this flawed plan today would be to ignore the urgent need to maintain equitable access to the waterfront, protect water-dependent uses, and incorporate the best thinking in climate justice. And we feel this urgency every day. The Boston Globe just reported that Boston could see as many as 18 high-tide flooding days this year due to climate change. As Vicky mentioned earlier, an exciting new coalition representing more than 45 diverse nonprofit and advocacy groups has formed to promote a resilient and inclusive waterfront for all. A poll commissioned by that group finds that more than 60% of the city's residents recognize that the waterfront does not reflect the diversity of our city. Moreover, while most of those surveyed agree that accessibility of the waterfront is critical, the poll shows that Black, Latinx, and the AAPI community prioritize diversity of programming, affordable amenities, and a vibrant economy for local residents along the waterfront. We heard just today from three leading mayoral candidates and multiple city councilors who noted that we must rethink the plans for the Harbor Garage site before it's too late. Calls are going to address sea level rise and to identify inequitable responses to climate change. My ask tonight is for DEP, Mass DEP, to recognize that any downtown waterfront MHP moving forward must prioritize climate justice and that the must prioritize climate justice and that the planning process must meaningfully engage organizations and people, including those within this coalition, actively doing the work to ensure that all voices are at the table to define what it means to have a waterfront for all. Boston deserves the protection for its, excuse me, Boston deserves the protection for its waterfront that Chapter 91 mandates. We are deeply concerned about the impact on the aquarium, on Central Wharf as a public gathering space, and on Boston's downtown waterfront more broadly. Rather than reinstate this flawed plan, Mass D E P should let the people, the institutions, and the changing leadership of the city of Boston engage in an inclusive process to decide what their present-day priorities are in creating a truly equitable downtown waterfront for all. Thank you so much for the opportunity to submit testimony.
Gabriela, thank you for taking the time and submitting those comments. Stephanie, who's next?
Yes, we've had a few more. I'll read three at a time. So Chris Nicodemus, Sandy Pedalaro, and Barbara Bevan. So Chris Nicodemus has the floor.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
So first of all, I'm Chris Nicodemus. I'm a founding member of the Pure Five Association and a longtime resident of Charlestown since 1990. And my experience with the Boston Harbor goes back to high school days when we used to train by running on the sand at Wallaston Beach. And this was back in the 1970s, and Boston Harbor was nothing like what it is now. And I actually want to recognize the DEP as being a pivotal agency in what has been a remarkable turnaround in the Greater Boston Harbor, from being the laughingstock harbor of the entire country to being really one of the great assets of our community and of the entire country. So anyway, I also want to say that all three very articulate speakers who preceded me have said a whole series of relevant points that are entirely consistent with my view. And so I will actually speak more concisely to just a couple of points. We all are aware that the Conservation Law Foundation's lawsuit against the BPDA and Superior Court put a stop to several projects in downtown, which are the subject of concern for a lot of people who are resident of downtown. And certainly, the two prior speakers fall into that category. I get to look at downtown from across the water, and, you know, I am concerned about our waterfront on the Charlestown side and its, both its environmental impacts and its value for social equity and access points that have been made. I am concerned that what this particular Chapter 91 amendment really amounts to is an attempt to finesse, a statutory finessing move to bypass the learned opinion of a judge in evaluating a very well-articulated objection to plans for what clearly is described as overdevelopment of downtown Boston. I'm very concerned because by the nature of the statute that you are being asked to amend, you are actually going to have an impact on many other potential mass components of the master harbor plans around the Commonwealth. And in particular, within Boston, where the master harbor plan has been broken up into these different community sections, the effect of the amendment will have implications on many other areas outside of the particular focus, which is obviously the area near Long Wharf. And to that, to that point, I recognize that state government and city government are trying to be cooperative and that this is a very political process. But I think the DEP needs to be reminded about its mission. And I think that actually Gabriella's comments really spoke to that. And my appreciation of what has been done on behalf of the public with the water quality in Boston, although there is room for further improvement, we all know the progress has been dramatic. And the ability of the public to access the waterfront is a real evolution from the early industrial days when the waterfront was used strictly for industrial purposes, and the city kind of grew up around it and put its sewage rate smack back into the harbor. So we really have come a long way. Imagine Boston 2030 is sort of a planning document, but unfortunately, it doesn't have any teeth. It's secondary to the quote-unquote municipal harbor plan. And meanwhile, the former BRA, now BPDA, has leaned on these amendments to the municipal harbor plan process in order to finance itself. And unfortunately, the BPDA is an authority. It's a very unusual planning agency in that it needs to self-fund itself through the land deals that it's able to make on a variety of properties that it has received title to in the public interest. And that creates a huge conflict of interest for the BPDA. And as motivated as they are in many ways to try and achieve what's best for the city, they also have to meet their own bottom line. And so that is really a major financial conflict of interest. So the DEP has a mission, which is to serve the public, the best interest of the public and the best interest of the environment. You've really done a marvelous job at that, and you continue to do that, and you should be lauded for that. So as a very concerned citizen of Boston and Massachusetts, I am very distressed to see this attempt at a statutory finesse to allow what are really obsolete planning rules. For example, in Charlestown, it's actually a 30-year-old regulation that they are trying to apply. There has not been a proper update with a proper due process in 30 years to that 1990 regulation. And with climate change, all the rules of engagement that may have applied, and even back in 1990, I think that process was perhaps not even appropriate. Certainly no longer apply. And as I mentioned, imagine Boston 2030 certainly is looking at the issues of climate resilience and rising sea levels, absolutely contrary to the spirit of that particular statute. And so when bad planning is allowed to happen because poor outdated statutes are leaned on, and you really, as a regulator, you have to comply with the letter of the law. So here, we're facing a situation where we're trying to essentially retrograde the thinking of what is a responsible urban planning and what is responsible environmental planning in a very stressful time. I think we should all pay attention to the smoke that clouded our view of the entire state, not from Massachusetts burning, but from the rest of Canada and California and Oregon burning, to recognize that we really do have a situation that needs to be addressed with great diligence. And there is nothing more inappropriate than using some sort of a statutory amendment to bypass the Superior Court ruling. And with that, I think I will rest my case, and I will submit a written comment that echoes these thoughts. Thank you.
Chris, thank you very much for your thoughtful comments. I suppose having the moderator's discretion here. I want to be very respectful of your comments. I want to just have one very minor clarification, and that is for everyone. And that is, the department presently seeks through this process to amend the waterways regulations, which are 310 CMR 9.00. It is those regulations that implement the statute, which is general law, Chapter 91. The department is not seeking to modify the statute. We don't have that authority. That was the legislature. We are charged with promulgating regulations. And that is what we're seeking to do, is to amend the current regulations. So which you go. You see a lot, you heard a lot. You clearly understand the process. I just want to point out that very minor discrepancy here, that this is a regulatory amendment, not a statutory.
Right, yes. The legal definitions of statute versus regulation, the results are, I think, are the net outcome is the concern, rather than the precision of the language. I apologize for that.
I understand. All right. Thank you for your comments.
All right. There are two remaining folks who have indicated so far that they would like to speak, and that's Sandy Pedalaro and Barbara Bevan. I did, again, repost in the chat the instructions, if you will, on how to indicate if you'd like to speak, so feel free to do that. Sandy Pedalaro.
Hi, my name is Sandy Pedalaro. I hope that you can hear me. I will be brief because I have lung disease, and I'm in the middle of an exacerbation right now. So I will keep my point shot. We will be submitting a written commentary. I'm the president of the Mercantile Warf Tenants Association. We just had a hard win at keeping our building affordable. The only downtown north end, this side of Boston, affordable housing on the water. We are across from Boston Harbor and adjacent, we're adjacent to the downtown waterfront neighborhood in the north edge. Okay, my comments. I believe that we need to keep the Boston's municipal harbor plan as it stands. We don't want you to include it as is in the regulations, in the new regulations, because it will allow for buildings such as Jafaro's project to go forward and others, and it will destroy not only the view, but the Aviads, and it will create wind tunnels. It will create shadows, and it will be giving over, it will be allowing the opportunity over the, in the future, in the near future, to begin to take away our whole waterfront with large projects and keeping the rest of us from our public waterways and from the Aviads of the harbor. The harbor belongs to everybody. It doesn't belong to the few who can afford to build large projects, and then the few who can afford to buy in those large projects. Thank you very much for your comments. We'll be sending more. My voice is fading. Thank you.
Sandy, thank you for attending and for expending that effort to offer comments. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Daniel, I just want to point out, as a reminder to us, after this next speaker, we want to make sure to do a roll call for those who have phoned in who can't see the chat to see if there's anybody there who would like to unmute and offer comments. So next up is Barbara Bevan.
Barbara, you're on mute.
All right. All right. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. If you could please start again. We don't want to miss what you said.
It wasn't that important. So I really kind of, I'm not quite sure what we're accomplishing here, but I will say my concern has been on the waterfront. I've been, I moved to Boston and Charlestown 31 years ago, and I fell in love with everything about it. I also have seen the waterfront in the city of Boston become every single pier with huge complexes, whether it was the fan pier or the lobster or the different piers all along the city, and which has totally blocked off the public from the waterfront. And I'm not quite sure if the DEP has any power over this, but we're now down to one last pier, which happens to be in the waterfront in Charlestown. It's Pier Five. And again, like all other piers, the BRA, now BPDA, has put out RFPs for big complexes to be built on it. And of course, in this particular case, it would be kind of disastrous because this was a pier that might have been built in the, oh, like 1911, but also has been in 1945 built with 1,600 pilings. We have no idea what's in the soil there. My concern is more about the waterfront being blocked off from the public. It is such a beautiful harbor. It's a beautiful city, and yet the public cannot get to the waterfront. And although I'm on a couple committees trying to preserve the pier, there's a lot of other things that concerned me. And I think a number of years ago, Salamatina, a counselor then, and a group of us put together ferry service to go around the city and stop at every one of these piers to give public access on the waterfront just to cut down on carbon emissions and the traffic in the city. And that went by the wayside mostly because we got the federal funding for ferries, but the BPDA received the money and they gave it to the convention center. I understand it. I know the BRA, BPDA, needs to make money to sustain itself, which is so unusual. We're the only city in the country that has no planning department and no development department. I would like so much for us to put our energy into preserving the waterfront for the public, what's left of it. And also, when you think of climate change, which was one of the reasons for this ferry service, that we would be getting people commuting to and from work all over the city on the waterfront and not on the subways that probably will be submerged in water. So there was a lot of things over the 30 years I've been dealing, and I have a lot of very good relationships with the BRA, understanding that they're in a different position than any other planning and development department, because it isn't a department, it's an authority. But the rest of the country does have taxpaying, the answers to taxpayers' were planning and development. So my concern here, and I don't know how the DEP can help, but if we could just preserve what's left of the waterfront for the public to make it public accessible, and also if we can look forward to perhaps some kind of, even looking forward to some communicating, I mean, commuting on the water with ferry service. I think that might be a project for us to go back and address again. I actually appreciate this. I had no plan on speaking, but I thought it's so dear to me, this gorgeous harbor we have, the waterfront we have, and needing to protect it, and all that we can do with it is unbelievable. But we just need to work together to have that happen, and thank you for doing this tonight.
Barbara, thank you very much for speaking. Again, we ask that folks submit written comments because that is the best way to facilitate the department reviewing those and considering them as we move forward. I'm taking notes. There's several people taking notes. These videos will be retained. These videos will be available. However, the best way to be heard is really to provide those written comments as well. Thank you for that. I see.
Right, we have, oh. We have Nushin Nobari, then Andrea Pollinger. And I do want to confirm for those on the phone, we haven't forgot about you. As soon as others, the list has exhausted itself, we'll go to the folks on the phone and to unmute your And to unmute yourself, you press star six. So next up, Nushin Nobari, then Andrea Pollinger.
Hi, my name is Nushin Nobari. I live in the area, I live in Harbor Towers. The prior speakers, especially the last one, spoke extremely eloquently to my thoughts. I've been a Bostonian for 13 years. And I just love this neighborhood. And I can see from South Station all the way to Coast Guard, the waterfront is lined with luxury buildings. I also see that there are hundreds and hundreds of tourists and children and families coming to this area to enjoy the waterfront. With all due respect to Mr. Shafaro and what he is investing and what he is planning to invest, I think it's really about time we rethink what we can do with the only parcel left in this area that's open. I mean, and especially every time with the drop of rain, we've got floods here. They have installed barriers around the subway or on the T so that the water doesn't go down. It's really sad to see what the millions and millions and billions of dollars actually, considering the big deal, the tunnel that they built. We're going to take the last parcel and then turn it and basically solidify the waterfront into a solid wall. And how, when I see those children playing in the fountain and families sitting around, and believe me, most of them cannot afford to live around here. We've got Bentleys on the sidewalks. You know, we have to really think what kind of waterfront we want to preserve for all Bostonians to enjoy. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much.
My comments in writing.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I appreciate the time attending this evening.
Next up is Andrea Pollinger.
After Andrea, after Andrea, we're going to go to the, we're going to go to the callers and see if anybody wants to speak.
Excellent.
Andrea, you have the floor.
Hi, I won't be long. I think the last two speakers and Gabrielle and many others have said a lot of, have articulated my feelings. But I have a lot to learn about this. I am a new resident. I lived in the Seaport for a while, but I grew up in Massachusetts, grew up in Framingham, went to school in the state. And it is one of the most precious places I could ever imagine living anywhere in Massachusetts, for that matter. But the waterfront is really special. And I just, from what I understand, which I plan to learn a lot more about before August 6th, and I put in any comments because I have a lot of questions. This seems like a time, like a gift, this decision by the court to buy us time. I mean, Shafaro's waited a decade, you know, another few months to get this right. Doesn't seem like a lot to me. And I know that's hard for them to probably hear because every day is a lot of money. But, but to imagine what this could really be for the public. And I completely agree, the garage is not a good use of that space. It's ugly and it's, it may help the aquarium. But it doesn't seem like we've had a hard time finding parking garages around here. The bottom line is the access that families have. It is one of the most open spaces on the waterfront that you can see. I used to rent down in the Seaport area. And even as a renter, I didn't have access to the place. You know, it's quite a distance to get to the water, depending on where you live down there. And, and there were certainly people hanging out at bars, but there wasn't families in fountains and children listening to the saxophone player and people going, you know, crazy overlooking at boats going by. And, and it is a really precious part of the city that I just feel like with the decision that the courts made, the DEP has the time to do this and to engage the community in really imagining what the possibilities are for this space. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrea, can you come back? You mentioned you were a Seaport resident. Are you a resident of the waterfront presently?
Yeah, I live in, you know, I live in Harbor Towers. And, you know, I've, this is my third time downsizing to get here. But it's, it's a really interesting place. I mean, this community was built originally as affordable housing back in the 70s. And I've met many people who have lived here as much as 40 years and the transformations that they've seen. Growing up in Framingham, you know, there was no aquarium here. There was no Rose Wharf. There wasn't even a Quincy Market. It was a big flea market that you could walk to. It was a big deal to come into the city with my girlfriends to get down to the Seaport to find, not to Seaport, to what's now Faneuil Hall, to find, you know, old water coolers that we could transform into terrariums. I mean, this place was, was not developed at all. And of course, the elevated highway was bisecting the area. And it was considered kind of like not where you want to be. And Tip O'Neill and others had the vision and the imagination and the patience to really think about what this area could become. And I think unlike the Seaport area, which I think was developed in a very different way, this area had some thought put into it. The Greenway is magnificent and it does attract people from all over. And that fountain is the swimming pool of the city. On hot days, that's where everybody goes to get cooled off. So it feels very special to be living at Harbor Towers for its history, as much as, as much as, you know, my, I'm grateful every day for the opportunity. But, but the waterfront is incredibly precious. So I hope we don't.
Thank you. I really wanted, I wanted to know where the geographic perspective was, was coming from. So thank you for that. I would like to go to the callers. Let's. There are three, six, there are six individuals who have phoned in. And. That's, I guess, phone number ending 3282. I guess this is a little awkward here. If. Stephanie, what's the code to unlock?
Star six.
Star six. So, you know, actually, all six of the individuals who are presently on the phone. If any of you wish to speak, go ahead and push star six on your phone. And we'll see that you're, you have been unmuted and it will know that you want to, you want to offer testimony. So rather than go through everybody at once. Again, star six. And we'll know you want to speak. So I don't see anyone wanting to, anyone from the caller, from the phone ins wishing to offer testimony. Not going to retract that offer. But if you want to take yourself off mute, one of those call-ins, we'll be happy to entertain comments. Stephanie, is there anyone else from the chat who have signed up to? Want to speak? Stephanie, you're on mute. Stephanie's trying to hear mute button. I want to point out that it's been pointed out to me that. Yeah, I lost that. Star nine?
Star six, yep. And there you go, even the best of us fail to unmute. So we now.
I'm sorry. So I am wonderful at interrupting. I'm sure Stephanie regrets that some days. Star nine to the callers, star nine is the way that. Yes. And star nine on the cell phone will allow that caller to raise their hand. So. Anyway, I'm not going to.
Okay.
We're not going to wait until a caller chooses to speak. Is there anyone else who wanted to do offer testimony?
Yes, we have Debbie Robinson, who has raised her hand.
All right. Debbie, you have the floor, but you are on mute.
I'm mute. Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, Debbie, we can hear you.
Thank you. I'm Debbie Robinson. I apologize for joining this meeting late. I had a medical appointment. And in fact, it was a few blocks from Harbor Towers. During the past 13 years, my late husband, Morris Robinson, and I lived at Harbor Towers, first in Tower 13H and then in Tower 226A. Now that I'm a widow, I'm back at the home in Newton. But every single time I go down there to see my rental units, I'm absolutely in awe of the glory, of the beauty, of the place as a community, as a piece of nature. It's a rare jewel in the world. And we are especially blessed to have it in the middle of the city. I know that the parking garage is an eyesore. However, it has not prevented the prices of units at Harbor Towers going up on an almost constant basis.
There you go. Please continue, Debbie.
Yes, somebody was trying to call in, I apologize. And so there's something in the Jewish Talmud, the ethics of the fathers, that says that if you're going to make a change in something, make sure that the cost benefit ratio is worthwhile. Sometimes you can make an effort and all your benefit goes out in the loss. And that is what I see coming up here. We would, the developer would replace the ugly garage, which still in essence serves a purpose. There's parking there for those who want to use it. And we would replace it with something that would bring in tax money for the city. But is it really worth it? Especially with today's Boston Globe article about the potential for flooding in the aquarium subway station in as little as 10 years? What are we doing to allow something like that major construction so close to the water? The carpenters have a slogan that says, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So of course, we would like an upgrade on the garage. But replacing it with this major tower with all the literal and figurative fallout, to my mind, is not a benefit. It ain't broke, don't fix it this way. Find another way. Take some time and find another way or leave it the way it is. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I consider it an honor.
Debbie, thank you very much. I appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you.
Daniel, we have two more people who have identified they want to speak. Deb Seawick, S I W I K, and Bruce Berman. And I will continue to monitor the chat. So Deb Seawick is next.
Thank you very much. My name's Deb and I come from the great city of Chicago. First of all, I do want to say I wrote immediately when I heard about this project. And you have my, my thoughts on file from the very first week I heard about this. In the great city of Chicago, from very early on, they put a moratorium on building on the lakefront. And one of the reasons Chicago is a great city is because of Lakefront. So my husband and I moved to the great city of Boston. One of the first things we wanted to do is let's check out Boston Harbor. So we went down to the harbor and we couldn't find it. There's no place to find the water. And we tried, we go down this street, we went down this street. And if you go down to the north end and go up to Cop Hill, you can finally see the water. And maybe if you go down the Charleston Navy Yard, you can see the water. But finding the water is impossible. And we both sat there and said, this is crazy. How much money Boston must lose every year from all the people that would come here to see historic Boston Harbor? We've heard it earlier this evening. And that's exactly what I said. Yes, parking is a pain in the you-know-what in Boston. I know. I've been here 26 years now. However, a parking garage can be done well, can be done not on the waterfront and can be done so that it doesn't interfere with access to the water. And the more access we have to the water, the more parks we have, like the Greenway, the more ways that we bring our visitors to Boston, the more money Boston makes 24/7, 365, as the kids used to say. I don't know what they say anymore. Don't make the big mistake of losing the money, of losing the visitors, of cutting people off from the beautiful harbor, the historic harbor, history. This is it. This is where it all began, but you can't see it. Let's let people see it. So from the beautiful city of Chicago to the beautiful city of Boston, let your visitors see the harbor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I want, I do want to thank Stephanie and Alice and Daniel and the team at DEP for a long day and for their patience and for finding ways to accommodate so many people. I know there are a lot of people on this, at this meeting, as there were at the previous meeting, who are here primarily to express their opposition to the redevelopment plan for the IMPA-designed American Brutalist Harbor Garage. And in fact, there are people who prefer the garage to redevelopment, as I've heard before. I'm not here to talk about a project. I am here to just urge you, Daniel, and to urge DEP to, I'd like to speak about the regulations just for a brief second. I'd like to preserve the right for this mayor that we have now and for the next mayor that we have in Boston. I'd like to preserve the right that the previous mayors have enjoyed. And that's to have an effect on the shape of development and the process of development of the waterfront in their city, whether it's Newburyport or Gloucester or New Bedford or Fall River. The mayors and elected officials have a vision. And frankly, they have a deeper understanding of appropriate offsets and substitutions, as called for under the regulation, than folks at DEP. One, whose input and whose commitment to preserving our public trust rights is a critical part of the process. So, you know, I fully expect that at the end of the day, whether it's the court or your regulations or the legislature, that we're going to end up with a process. I just want to say that from my experience, that municipal harbor plans are critically important and valuable tools in helping cities shape their future. Now, I will say one thing in closing. And that's that I fully expect that this mayor and Boston's next mayor will be very, very sensitive and concerned about social justice, equity and inclusion in a way that no one that was running public process was a decade ago or even just a few years ago. In the aftermath of George Floyd's murder, things have changed. But the tool for the mayor in this town, this city or others, to set their agenda and to do it in a public, inclusive and extensive process is critically important. And I hope that you'll find a way to preserve that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there one more, Stephanie?
Daniel, no other participants as of now have indicated that they want to speak. And I'm checking the phone people to see if anybody has unmuted.
Yeah, I did. It was thunder. It was like, there was, I saw the wall.
And thank you for discovering that star nine allows the phone folks to raise their hand. And I don't see any of that. And I don't see any of that.
So I'm waiting for the lightning to knock out my power. My backup wifi ready. Is there, is there any, any, it seems like that's the last. Stephanie, are there any, any comments in the chat? Maybe from anyone who couldn't get through?
No. There are, there are a few comments in the chat which we have, which we will save, so those comments will, you know, be available to us. But nobody else has indicated, I guess it is a storm brewing. Nobody else has indicated a desire to provide verbal testimony or comments.
All right. I'm, I'm also scanning the chat at the moment. I want to point out that, I'm sorry, I didn't. The councillor, the candidate for, for city councillor, James Reggie, I can't see the rest of his name, I'm sorry. Someone had indicated that he couldn't, he couldn't call him, excuse me, couldn't hear him. So he, he provided his synopsis, I believe, of his comments in the chat. We will be saving the chat. We'll be posting the chat on our website. So if you, if you couldn't understand what we said, you can turn there. What else? I've got another comment here from Sylvie Agudelo. She writes, please remember, we are connected by systems, ecosystems, natural and built, electoral, community, economic systems. Consider that inland construction and resource depletion will also affect the waterfront. Consider pushing municipalities to incorporate many voices and viewpoints from the start. And that we can change and modify projects early in the process with more transparency and inclusion at the local level. Let's also work to understand and preserve our rights and interests from the start and not leave it to the state and federal government. That's the end of the comment. Not sure if she couldn't get in, or we were, whatever you. You may have lost Stephanie.
Back.
Back. So I don't see anyone else. I only saw those two comments in the chat, so I read both of those. I guess we'll wrap up shortly. I'm gonna share the slide again that has the the address for submitting public comments.
Fatten down the hatches.
Yeah. All right, share screen. Well. There we go. So this is the address one more time. I'm gonna leave that up there for a few minutes. This is the address to which you can send written comments. The subject line, the, all of this information is critical. By far, the best way to get information to the Waterways Program is d e p dot waterways at mass dot gov. That email address is monitored, I would say, on a daily basis, but it is many times per day. Multiple staff check that and endeavor to respond to inquiries as quickly as possible. That's the best way to get these comments to us. Please include a subject line indicated there. If you, if you really do need to submit a written, a hard copy, the address is provided again. Please provide the, the attention line there so that we can, we don't want to miss your comment. Having said all that, I want to thank you all. I'm gonna stop sharing so I can see some of your faces. I want to thank you all for, for taking the time to participate in this process and for, and for speaking up those that you did, providing testimony. And for those of you who provide written comments, thank you for that as well. Looks like it's a mess outside. The public comment deadline is August 6th. Please provide those written comments electronically if you're able. In the chat, we've got for another minute, in the chat is it, the address, the website address for D E P where you can find the copy of the regulations and a few summary documents. Copies of the public hearing and copies of these videos of these public hearings will also be posted there. Stephanie, anything you'd like to add?
No, just my appreciation for everybody's participation in this hearing process.
All right. Well, thank you all. With that, we're gonna end the, end the public hearing. Thank you.